Facetti.
There.
Bush.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Dahl.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Lindsay.
Here.
Steppis.
Here.
I would like to testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Okay, do we have any board communications?
Me as far as from the public, I can make a couple of comments if I may. Hopefully you hear me. I received both phone calls and emails, both for and against a new referendum. I'd say it was equally split from what I received. With good reasoning on both sides, I just want to say that I appreciate the information I received, both phone calls, emails, and it was interesting and it was very helpful in my thinking, but it was evenly split.
It's all right with you, Jeff, I would, I like to read some comments that I got, but I feel like there's a lot of people here that might make a similar comment. So I feel like it's the public makes those comments and then if there's any comments I got via email or a text or phone call that I would add, then I would be allowed to add that after the public comment. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We're going to allow a void in the audience that wants to speak, speak. We'd like you to please stay here, Dean, and please use the mic so that everybody can hear you. We are going to limit to three minutes. And if you really have a lot more to say, we may possibly set that for you and see how the outcome goes. So we'd like to speak first.
My name is Gary Zolvan. I'm just gonna fly out and see if my pants are... When Mr. Ray Wright gave his presentation on this referendum to our town board, I asked a very simple question at the end. I said, "What does the Plan B should disappear?" And he told me that there was no Plan B. And I made up my opinion right there how I was gonna hold out on the votes for this referendum, because if there is no back-up plan, that means there's nobody standing there pointing a finger at your chest saying, "We absolutely have to spend money right now." So I was, like Mr. Dahl said last week, there shouldn't be a choice. In my opinion, the choice is right there. Either vote no, or you vote no, so we don't spend money on an existing bill. And that's how I feel about it. I think the fact that we even have this meeting tonight is, in my opinion alone, embarrassing, as we do have election results, and I'm a firm believer in their results. And I think this community needs to stand by these results, whether I agree with it or not, because I certainly don't. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
My name is Steve Robinson. I hear in efforts to the plan for the reservation of the addition to the school, my main concern is the loading and unloading of the students. Now, I've lived on Front Street for 35 years, and I've never really had a problem with the loading and unloading of kids, because I've worked my schedule around the bus schedule. And I just, I agree maybe we should add on to the school, but I do not feel that we need a new pickup for the kids. I think it's just ideal with no traffic or queue. Anytime I've had to give in, buses have allowed me to. And like I said, I've always planned my schedule around the bus schedule, because like this year, they come at 3:35 to 3... or 3:25 to 3:35. So I plan my schedule around that. So other than the building of the addition and stuff, I would like to see a referendum as far as building a new elementary school with the simple fact I cannot see spending $12 million on rebuilding this school and then the school board in two to five years turn around and say, "Oh, let's put a referendum out there and build a new elementary school." Because even if we don't need it now, we're gonna need it a short time down the road. And why not go with the sure thing, take that $12 million and stick it towards the new elementary school? If that choice is not given to me on the way it is warranted at the election. Well, thank you very much for your time.
John Henry, Orlando South Highway Street. Does the law propose that the school will be expanded, playground, and equipment and other items? Have the issue quoted at second price in the meeting? And will you have a single post or four reports? Will this be a form of a tax impact for the entire model? Will you be allowing the old elementary school if property is sold? Raising taxes for homes in the area yet devaluing it?
Dennis McCurran. And I'm here because I'm a little baffled about the way this thing was handled in the first place, the first referendum. And I'm kinda wondering where the input came from to present the referendums that we voted on in the first place. And without having any kind of another option, it seems like it's kind of a built-in failure of the school board or the people that are involved in setting the referendum up in the first place. If we're to build a new referendum, I'm kinda curious about, we're duplicating the cost of advertising, informing rather, the citizens about this new one. And if this were presented as an option in the first place, it just seems like the cost that costs to them either, and I think it's like thousands of dollars to present that to the public, it's needlessly being spent now if we go ahead and do this new one. So I just would like to add also that, you know, there's always a tendency to build new, new, new. Those of us men who have been pointing all of our lives have seen this go on from the elementary school being built new, which now we're talking about possibly building another new elementary school. The old building wasn't good enough. It stands, and it's being used, and people are making income off it. The same thing is true for the high school. The high school wasn't good enough for all the different reasons people presented. The high school is income-producing, and it still stands. So I just think that some consideration needs to be given to working with what you have and doing things right in the first place, not having to duplicate everything that is involved in it. If anybody has any questions about this, I'd like to hear from them. I'm informed. Thank you.
Jenny, I just wanted to comment the reason that we had two questions. By law, that's all we could ask, and we needed the $350,000. So that only left us one spot left. This isn't something that we chose. And the original vote to go to referendum was a 4-3 board vote, which should have told you that the board was divided right from the very initial start. But once it's passed, we got behind the rest of the board, even though I was not in favor of going to referendum at the time. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that.
My name is Jenny Bonnet, and I sent a letter to all of the board members last week regarding my thoughts about this, what happened at the last board meeting. And I'm gonna read part of that letter tonight, because I think that it's important that some of the people here also hear what I wrote to you. I appreciate those of you who responded to me back. I'm gonna skip some of the letter, but I just wanted to, I'm just gonna read from it. "It seems that the impetus for drafting a new referendum is an answer to some of the community members and staff members who stated that they would like to have a choice between building new or renovating the old elementary school site. And I want to remind the board members and community members that the voters answered that question last spring when we responded to a survey put out by the Elementary School Planning Committee. When the committee was approved over a year ago, they spent an enormous amount of time and energy gathering information from other schools, from community members, open houses. They got some plans drafted that we could look at. And then, most importantly, they sent out a survey to all of the voting members of our district. Amongst the questions on the survey, two major options were proposed. Build a new elementary school, either attached to or adjacent to the existing middle school, high school, or the second choice, renovate and expand the existing elementary school. The residents favored the renovation option over the other two options. I remind people that the survey results are on the website, the district website. The renovation option was favored, 55% to 35% opposed, whereas the other options were between 42 and 47% favored. Now, certainly some eligible voters in our school district who preferred to build new were to take no action at all, but the planning committee's survey response rate is more than sufficient to make the results statistically valid, meaning that if every single registered voter in our school district filled out that survey, the results would likely remain the same within a plus or minus 4% margin of error. That alone should convince the board members and community members that the voters more strongly favor keeping the elementary school at the existing location over building new. Because of this survey, the school board rightfully and thoughtfully used the research to draft and approve the referendum on which we voted last November. Now, everyone will be happy with results of the election. Some will say they were not well informed or misunderstood the issues. But that's hard to believe, given the number of surveys returned, as well as the numerous public presentations, mailings, open houses, information sessions that were afforded to inform the voters. November's vote is an example of a legal and transparent democratic process which engaged our community throughout. I urge you to respect the voters and move ahead with bids. Stalling could cost the district tens of thousands of additional dollars and jeopardize the public's trust in the meaning of our votes. Thank you.
I'm Maggie Tovary. I'm a parent. I'm also a substitute teacher. And thank you, Jennifer. You just pretty much said everything I was going to say. But I do want to say I've been in almost every classroom at the elementary school, and I think we need to commend our elementary staff. They have been making do with what they have for a very long time, and those children are learning. So keep the children in line. I also want to remind the board that you have made a commitment. You adopted a strategic plan, and there is a section in there on communicating with the community, where you have committed that you will trust survey results. So I'd like to remind you that you did have a survey that was presented to you before you decided on the referendum question. You also have a policy, I think it's number 910, a building policy where you have committed to be fiscally responsible. So is it responsible to delay the process, spend extra money and time and effort, and make the children wait to get their school remodeled? I also want to give a shout-out to our communications director, who did an excellent job throughout this entire process. We have been following along. And like Jennifer said, to be uninformed would be pretty hard to do. It was in the newspaper. It was on the website. It was on the Facebook page. We received email. The board meetings are on YouTube. If you don't have email, you can go to our free renovative library and use a computer for free. So as adults, if you choose not to be informed, that's your choice. We went to the polls. People took time out of their busy days. A lot of people to vote. You should honor that vote. Thank you.
Mary Jean James. I just have a couple of questions regarding the dollar figures, the $12 million or $11.92. Is that set in concrete? Is that value, that price gonna go up after the construction starts? And also, I have a same question regarding your new school at $18 million. Is that the feeling of the board that whatever you decide to do, is that the amount that it's gonna be? Or is the $18 million for the new school going to be $20 million after we get going? Or is the price gonna go up on the renovation? Just wondering what those figures may end up being at the end.
The bond would only allow, you could only sell bonds up to $11.92 on the renovation. So any other monies, if the costs were overrun, it would either have to come out of the project to reduce it, or we would have to find the monies somewhere within the school budget. So at least for $11.92, we only have authority to borrow up to $11.92.
I might be missing saying, sorry. I believe that to have a second referendum would be a giant leap backwards. I personally feel we have a obligation to follow through on a referendum that we all just passed. The Elementary School Planning Committee, a team of fellow resident community members, met for many months. Those meetings were, the public was invited to come to those meetings. They recorded back to the school board what happened at those meetings and were recorded in the paper. And the meetings are still out there on YouTube. And it's important that one of the things they looked at was building up here, that this was an option that they fully explored, that there were plans for it on the up. And after reviewing all their options, having the community survey, getting community feedback, they decided that the renovation should be at the elementary school. The place where there's the old Savannah, the school garden, the sledding hill. The place that's close enough to town that the kids can walk to town. I see them all the time. They walk to the library rates. It's a wonderful place. They'd be the news if the elementary school was up here. The fact that there are people unhappy with the outcome of the referendum is not surprising. It's perfectly normal for people to disagree with the outcome of an election. But at times like that, it's a burden for the school board to stand by the willing decision and to not agree with it. You have 1,116 people in this community, 2,500, that voted to have the renovation out there. You cannot ignore that vote. You cannot just set it aside. A referendum is a big deal. It is not, it's not a survey that you could just ignore and shut it anyway. We all want to vote. It's time for you to do what we have allowed you to do. It's a wonderful thing. You have the opportunity to vote and make that school down there even better than the garden is. I look forward to you doing that, and I feel that this meeting and the last term of this is a waste of time. If we keep having these meetings, you're just wasting time and money. So I look forward to having a renovation down there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paris Johnston, 731 Center Street. I want to talk about some of the numbers that have come up with this election. I really think it's important the school board knows what the will of the people is. I think that there was a survey. The results of the survey were 55% of the people who responded to the survey wanted to go with the renovation. The vote, 2,077 votes, 1,116 yes, 961 no. 54% said, "Let's go with the renovation." The board member votes 4 to 3. 57% of the board said, "Let's do this." This is a very clear majority of what the community wants with its will. I think it's a huge mistake to go back and do this again. I talked to multiple board members, and my concern is if we do this vote in April and it doesn't pass, the construction cost is going to go up for the building. An estimate of what I've seen, somewhere between $600,000 and $1 million. That's coming directly out of $11.92 million. And I want to know what the board thinks they're gonna cut from this project when we lose $1 million from this. That's really problematic to me if the will of the community is to build the renovation and not build a new school. I think we're going backwards and ignoring what the community has overwhelmingly said. And the other thing is, the original estimation that you got for the new school was in the $19 million range. But if the project has been extended by another year, that also has a 5% to 6% increase of that, which is well over $1 million, and what's going to be subtracted from that? I find these things to be problematic. And I hope that you will, as a board, listen to the will of the community. We voted on this thing. We do not have a large-scale referendum very often. This is the second or third time it's happened in my experience since being here in the early 90s. And we had a significantly larger majority voting on this than when the high school was voted. And the board at that point did not ignore the will of the people and do something different. They listened to what the voting public said. My other concern is with the actual school, if we build a school up here. The communities around here have not done a great job of keeping up these schools. We happen to have apartments in our old schools here which are not in full capacity. But there are communities in Monfort, Linden, Ruby, and Argyle who have schools that are complete isolation in their community. And I really don't want to have one of those looking out my front window every morning when I leave my house. I think we as a community would take better care of that building, but I'm concerned if we aren't filling these with the current school we have as apartments, how would the vote we think would be going into this building that we could keep full if we can't keep the existing property full? So I hope you listen to the will of people and make the choice that we have all given to you. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Oliver Holzer. I live on Highway 39. I know a lot of people here live in that neighborhood, but the elementary school, I think a lot of the concern is what's gonna happen in that neighborhood after the school, if the school is not renovated and it's moved up here. But I think, you know, we're looking also at the, if we're gonna improve education if we did have the opportunity to move to new school here. And I don't know which one I would vote for if it's put on the referendum at this point. I think each side has to make their case. And some people are saying that the people who voted, they made a decision on the referendum. You know, not everybody was happy that the referendum was on there. So, you know, when it passed, now it is what it is. You put up another referendum, a bit of just have to deal with it. If it gets passed, it gets passed. It doesn't, it doesn't. But I think the people with renovation ideas that are here, I think you have some good arguments to keep it renovated. But I think in the end, it boils down to voters. It's not a survey. It's not a percentage. It's not statistical, whatever. It goes down to the voters. It's all made decisions. And this is a huge decision. It goes out multi-generational. That school's gonna be there. A new school will probably be there for eight years or more. This renovation, I don't know how long that will last. Maybe it will last that long too, but you're building on top of another building that's, you know, 60 years old. So I think we have to look at some of the common sense stuff too, but I'm not advocating for a new school, but I think the argument has to be made on both sides of it, because we need to look at this in more detail of what choice we want to make. And I know the people here that live in that neighborhood, who are saying that the election will be won. We have the referendum, but I don't think that's how it works. I think you guys have to decide what's best for the future of the school district and the students. And if that plays into helping keep that neighborhood viable and fulfill the goals, that makes sense too. But I think there's a lot of discussion that has to be done on both sides of this argument. Thanks.
Hi there, everyone. Weird to be, I didn't mean to back to all of you, but my name is Maggie Tucker. I live on Commerce Street. I was co-chair of the ESBC, the Elementary Committee. So if anyone has, there's a couple other members here. If there are any specific questions about the committee, any of us would be happy to answer them. However, I will not be speaking as the chair of that committee right now. I have had some points that Jenny already covered very eloquently, which I appreciate very much. But I have a couple of questions. Has the board contemplated, if you call another referendum and it passes, what your action will then be? Which referendum will be correct? Which one will have more power? What if the turnout people is less than the turnout that we had in November? We know that last November was a pretty big midterm election. It had both national and state block politicians running. And it was a very highly representative, 87% turnout in our district. Do we believe that we'll have that turnout again in April? It's highly unlikely. Because elections are anonymous, there will be no way to tell whether the same people voted yes all times or whether folks voted differently time to time. All of this will put you as board members in a position of deciding which group of constituents will be, you will like to choose from, which one you value more, which one you think is more correct. Is that a decision that you as board members would really like to hold? Is that something you really want to decide between? What if the referendum is rejected in April? The elementary school remodel would certainly not be ready to begin in the summer of 2019. And our elementary school students, that's probably to open it up, will be living with the capacity and code issues that they've been living with for years, or at least one additional year, hopefully two. Not to mention the increased costs of construction that Parish pointed out. There doesn't seem to be a great outcome here. There just only seem to be cost overrides, higher spending, confusion amongst the citizens of the town, and disillusionment in our democratic process.
Hi, my name is Depphans. I'm living on Commerce Street. My comment is just basically that if you don't follow through with this referendum, if you want to try to write one in April, you really, my opinion, it's impossible. It's too early. If you don't get enough information together, you don't get enough information compiled. And not only that, but you've lost the trust of those who are already voted, because they're gonna say, "Well, you know, we voted again in April." If they don't like it, they're not gonna listen to us again either.
Anybody else?
Parrish Pitts. I've talked to several board members. My understanding was, is, and I didn't really understand the election in April. I have questions about it at the time. Anyway, it was voted by people to spend money for doing renovation of the elementary school. I understand, I'm talking to a little bit sober tonight, with a few people, that the meeting here tonight is not whether we spend money or not, that's been taken care of, I guess, to say. Then the question here tonight is whether we want a new school or spend almost the same amount of money to renovate an old school, which might be ten years from now, it'll be brought up again, to be an old school then. And that's my understanding of this meeting. It's going to be a referendum, it would be for a new school or remodel the old school or not. Can't believe we can make any understanding and put a lot of money on old school.
Anyone else?
Hi, Larry. I spoke to Larry last week. I follow up with a lot. I've talked to, sent an email to him most every year. One thing keeps resonating back and forth from the time Gary got up to the Capitol that day here. I absolutely agree, democracy is key in this whole thing. Gary pointed that out from the beginning of the kickoff. I've made a lot of mistakes as a teacher in my career, and that's really what comes out tonight when we're debating on this back and forth. If you guys think everything went well from the time that referendum questions were brought up, to the time it actually got proposed to the voters, and everything went down the way it should have went, then it worked, and there was no need to go to a referendum. If it didn't, and the people didn't actually get the choices that they feel they should have got, then the next, that's why we need to work on that referendum. Really will come out with that.
I have a question. When you say fifty-five percent of the people wanted the building down where it is now, is that fifty-five percent of the three hundred and fifty-six that took the survey?
It is. It is. They were asked, they were asked three, three questions.
Right, so like you're saying, out of that is fifty-five percent.
Correct.
So that's a hundred and ninety-six people.
No, no, no.
Fifty-five percent of the three hundred and fifty-six surveys?
Yes. I don't have the number in front of me exactly.
Well, I thought you said there was three hundred and fifty-six returned.
Yes.
Around that. So of those returned, fifty-five percent of those wanted the building to remain where it is?
Yes.
So that's a hundred and ninety-six people. Out of, I don't know how many voting members, how many voting people are at that point? How many can vote? Do you know?
It was mailed, mailed to every voter in our district, and that number, if you know anything about statistics, I'm remembering statistics from college.
I know a lot about statistics.
Okay, so if you, statistically, that is a representative sample. How many eligible voters do we have in our school district? Does somebody have that number?
No, we don't know that. How many did you send out, do you remember?
I think Joel. We had...
Like two thousand, three hundred something.
Two thousand and twenty-four hundred? About twenty-four hundred?
You sent out twenty-four hundred?
I'm talking about the number of actual eligible voters in our school district. Everybody in the district is sent a survey.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, how many surveys were sent out?
It's about twenty-two to twenty-four hundred were sent out.
Twenty-two to twenty-four hundred in the mail, and it was also pushed electronic.
So, and only three hundred and fifty-six were returned?
That is a significant, statistically significant sample.
Really?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Well, you learned, you learned a different statistic than I did. Because out of that three hundred and fifty-six that returned, and fifty-five percent of those said yes to a building down where it is, that's only a hundred and ninety-six people out of twenty-four hundred.
But everybody had a chance.
Am I, am I missing something?
They have a chance.
No, all, all of those people had a chance to either...
I know they had a chance, I get it, but what I want to know is, it's been said over and over, it's like three hundred and fifty, I'm not sure if it's actions or initiatives or, but it's three hundred and fifty-some returned their survey?
It was three hundred and sixty.
Correct, right?
Sixty.
Okay, out of twenty-four hundred returned the surveys? Out of that three hundred and fifty-six, fifty-five percent said, "We want the building remodeled." You take fifty-five percent...
They were given, they were given the choice to choose between, it wasn't fifty-five percent who supported renovation or a new school, it was fifty-five percent that would support a new school versus forty-five percent that would support a new school. They were given three options. You should take a look at the survey.
No, I have, but what I'm, what I'm not understanding there, and maybe I'm just a little bit of a, I don't know. But what was the percent that came back that said they wanted the building where it was on the survey? That's what I did. I think two percent.
Fifty-five percent of respondents supported the idea of a renovation.
How many?
Fifty-five percent.
Out of the three hundred and fifty-six?
Sixty-five, yes.
That's a hundred and ninety-six people.
Correct. But it's a survey which is representative of the population. So a survey of that result of three hundred and sixty-five people out of a population of twenty-five hundred people gives you a statistical result of plus or minus three to five percent. So if you were overlaying plus or minus three to five percent on the questions of whether to build a new school, to renovate a new school, or to add on ancillary weight to this current school, there was overwhelmingly, overwhelming support for renovation, and there was not support for a new build. In addition, there was support for a tax increase above the twelve million dollars. But once you went above that twelve million dollar threshold, the support dropped precipitously.
But what I'm saying here, I'm going to repeat myself one more time. Out of the three hundred and fifty-six surveys that were returned, fifty-five percent of those that returned their survey wanted the school remodeled down there or spent twelve million dollars.
It was support of the model, and in addition...
So that's a hundred and ninety-six people.
I don't have that.
I mean, you can make, you know, you can make research and add a weight on to it a lot of times.
No, no, no.
But what I'm saying is, no, but the point is, fifty-five percent of three hundred and fifty-six is a hundred and ninety-six?
Here's the real point. The real point...
No, I mean, I said, I wrote...
The survey was one small part of the battery of information that was supplied to the board. And it was the school board's job to synthesize information, one small part of which was the survey, in order to decide whether or not to go to referendum. So the focus on the survey, I think, is a little bit outside. There was a capacity study.
So that's why I have to, it's brought up so much.
There was a whole evaluation study. There was space needs evaluation. There was input from an architecture firm. There was discussion with other school districts. So there was a lot of talk about the survey, but it was one part of all the information that was gathered and presented.
I understand that, I know.
My observation of the survey.
I see something quickly about the survey.
Three, I got the floor.
Perfect.
Three hundred, three hundred and fifty-five respondents. Fifty-six.
Three sixty-five. Three sixty-five is a number.
Twenty-five hundred people. So the other, the other twenty-one hundred people, in their opinion, you didn't, you did not go back out to seek any further opinion?
But the point of the survey is...
I mean, I'm going to ask the table, the table sitting right, right there with all the gentlemen at, did any of you guys answer the survey?
I did not, no.
So, and mine didn't come until three days before it was due. So you're just missing their opinions on, on this project.
That's not true.
Twelve million dollar project.
That's not true.
Did you really seek their opinion?
But the point of the survey is not to poll a whole population that's going to be involved in the decision. That's actually what the election was.
But the survey...
The survey is just a representation and one piece of information that can be used in a deliberative forum that you all participated in or multiple participated in.
Hear about the survey at every meeting and how important the survey is.
I understand that, Maggie, I get it, you know, I understand. But what I'm saying is, it's always brought up that three hundred and fifty-six people approved it, and I just want to, I want to let everybody know that fifty-five percent of three hundred and fifty-six is a hundred and ninety-six people. That's not a lot out of twenty-four hundred.
Tony, in, in these surveys, the numbers that were given by consulting firms or on the website, the school district website, say that typically a seven to ten percent is a great return on a survey like this. That's accepted fact in the industry.
Okay.
This is the reality, it's, it's coming directly from, you guys, as a school board, are putting out into the community. You are responsible for that information, and you should know that information. So we have a fifteen percent response rate, which is double the normal response rate, which would seem to me, that's a very good community response.
Well, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that response rate, but that's, that's fine.
That's just the reality of the industry.
But we also have to remember that the referendum won by a hundred and fifty votes. Okay? It didn't win by four hundred, eight hundred, it was a hundred and fifty out of all those people. And we had a really great turnout, we have to remember also, that we had a great turnout because it was also an election. It wasn't just a referendum. But I understand, I understand everything, I, I get it all, I'm, I'm not dimmed, I understand everything. I just wanted to make the point that three hundred and fifty-six surveys, fifty-five, fifty-five percent of that is a hundred and ninety-six. That's all I wanted to say. You can tell me everything else if it's a representative sample, and okay, it's a representative sample, but it's a hundred and ninety-six people that returned the surveys out of twenty-four hundred.
Ma'am, way in the back, I'm sorry, I got you off. You have a question?
I was just going to say, basically, reiterate what yours just said. What FPH did help, basically, us, the elementary school planning committee, which I was a member of, formed a study, they said the same thing. It's seven to ten percent, sorry, seven to ten percent.
Can I be a little closer to my phone?
He was hoping for twenty-five percent. And like you said, we got fifteen percent response rate, which in all actuality, I think, as committee members, we were surprised that the response rate would be so low. And I think just as a committee member, one of the things that I hope back on in being part of that committee, in going through that long process, is I wish we had a school board member as a partner going through this process. Now I'm looking at a lot of these faces where some people might not have been as close to the research as we have had been, or really understand a lot of the intricacies. I think in whatever decisions y'all are leaning on tonight, where we may not be involved, I would just ask that you take a look at the study that UWU did on our population survey, and where our enrollment will be in the next five years, because their crystal ball and information is only good for five years, and after that, they can't say, "Hey, we're going to have an influx of kids," or not. So just take a look at the projected school district enrollment.
I understand all that. I'm just, I was just trying to make the point that when you say fifty-five percent of three hundred and fifty-six is one ninety-six. That's all I wanted to say. I, I don't need to hear plus or minus, you know, I know all that stuff. I just wanted to make sure that I was hearing that correct, and other people were hearing that correct, that it was three hundred and fifty-six, three hundred and fifty-five, and fifty-five percent of that said, "We go up to twelve million, or we do whatever we want with twelve million, build a new school," or, "Remodel." That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, and other people understand that thing, that it's a hundred and ninety-six people.
Jeff, I just want to make one more note. I called the Iowa Republican Party today to see what our turnouts were at the last four spring elections, and we averaged one thousand three hundred and fifty-six people voting in the April elections. So all it's going to take is six hundred and seventy-nine people, which is not going to be more than a hundred and ninety-six, when you think about it, Tony. It's a very, it's a very small number. You're going to be getting a much less representative slice of the minimum point voting population guaranteed in an April election versus what we got in the November election. This is probably been the highest turnout we've had in decades.
I agree.
Which is the, literally, I'd be saying, and I'm going to believe it honestly, in democracy, in the will of the people, in the majority vote. I can understand the quibbles, I think everyone's making very logical points, I think there's a lot of frustration, but this is the will of the people, and if we do an April vote, it's going to be a significantly poorer representation of what the will of minimum point is strictly from past voter turnouts, which did include a presidential primary, which wildly jumped the numbers up in 2016. They beat about eleven hundred if we didn't have that election there in 2016 to draw on there. So just to think about these numbers, I, I am always wanting to give, I think they paint a very clear picture of what the reality is. And like I said, that fifty-seven to fifty-three percent of constant support for this is really the will of the community in the majority, which is what you guys should be listening to.
I understand that, and I ask, I get a lot of community members that ask that. Tell me, why wasn't there a choice? Why did we just stay...
And we can all speculate on that, and a few people who are sitting in this board can tell you that.
I was not on the board.
And I'm aware of that, and the elected members of the board could tell you that, right? In this situation.
I think the goal to prevent speculation is to put the referendum on, and there won't be speculation. The other thing is, next time I see a survey, am I supposed to think that's going to be like my vote? Because a vote is a poll, not a survey. I saw that survey, and I figured, there's not, there's no reason that anybody's going to pass this, so I didn't even bother to submit it. And it did pass, and that's great. I mean, it means people behind education in this district. But, but I think there's so much focus on the survey, I don't think it's so, you know, you know, do we need to send a survey out to find out if we want a new school or renovate a school? Is that how the board are going to make a decision? That's going to take time on you too. To me, it seems like just do the referendum, you have a choice, and they're going to vote, and it's legally binding, you're going to say yes or no. I mean, I don't know if the proponents of the renovation feel that that's going to fail, and that's why they're pushing so hard not to put it out there, but if you want to hear from the voters, you put it out in the poll, and you get a vote. It just seems really obvious to me.
Hi, my name is Carlos, and I know I talked briefly last week, but I did hear many comments about not having a choice, you know, and confusion on the vote. And I think Kyle said it very well. We need to do the right thing, and you need to look at all the facts and all the pros and cons of this, and look at the financial aspect of it too, to do what's right, not only for the children, but for the community.
I just want to point out that the renovation of the elementary school is projected to last for fifty years, not five or ten, as some people have said. I'd also like to say, if you decide to go for an eighteen million dollar referendum, I wouldn't want to be voting for that. And I also would encourage everybody to vote, yeah. Now that we're allowed to speak twice, I just want to emphasize that the survey took about five minutes, for those who've dug it out. So, for people to come to now, I understand the predicament you're in. You're listening to people, and which is your job, to listen to the community. And they're coming to you saying, "I didn't have a voice, I didn't have a vote." Well, I'm sorry, that is not true. Besides the survey, you put a reach out to anyone on the committee. There is a special tab on the website, it's, hey, don't tease her than that. There was a tab for elementary planning committee. The names of the people on the committee were listed. Community members should reach out to them at any time throughout the entire process. The meetings were open to the public. The design workshop was over the course of two days, so everyone would have a chance to come. The referendum was on the school board agenda, I believe, three months ago, June, July, August. There was a special opportunity for people to come for before the referendum and make their voice, you know... their voice, you know. And I'm not saying that before, you know, school or a new school, that's not what tonight's meeting is about. Tonight's meeting is all of the board deciding to go back on their word or not.
I have a question for the public. First of all, thank you all for coming. Obviously, all the comments I've gotten on either side have been from a place of passion for the schools, you know? They wanna do what's right for the kids, and they wanna do the right thing, and there's plenty of space for reasonable disagreements here, so, but I appreciate all the comments. My, my question I keep having is, did the board do this the wrong way? To the point where we need to do a do-over, right? So, and I get the public's input on that, I'm a rookie board member, right? I've only been on here since April, so I need help understanding. But, we, we did, we knew the elementary school needed work, right? So, we did a needs assessment on what the school needed, what was wrong with it, were the classrooms too small, too big, were the entrances secure, was the parking lot sufficient, et cetera. We recruited community members to form a committee and dig a little deeper into the assessment, to look at other schools and survey the communities and talk to design firms, and then give the board a recommendation that, on what they think the best option would be, which we were not buying to agree with, right? Then, we had a design workshop that was open to the public, where people would come to the elementary school, and you could look at all 15-plus schematic drawings of various remodel looks, various new school looks, attached, unattached, there was even an option to demolish the old school and build on top of it, there was an option to build a new school, all the old football field, all of those were in public display, anyone can make any comments that the design firm took and the committee took very seriously in whittling down what might be the most likely design to go forward. Then, the committee made a recommendation to us to remodel, that that would be the best option that the community is most likely to afford. We debated that three times in three meetings, open to the public. And then, we wrote on the language, and then, after August, we had two forums at the elementary school that Mr. Wayne Wright posted and spoke very eloquently on all the data that came to this point of why have we got to this point? So, what I wanna know from the community is, you know, and there was, you know, we have a communications director on staff, you know, we have a very nice four-page outline of what I just said, it's available for your review, it was in the paper, if you got a survey, you can fill it out or not. None of that was binding, I totally understand that. But, I've been getting comments like, maybe the board should do their due diligence on this issue, and maybe you should weigh all the options. And, my question is, how could we have done this differently? Where the community could have walked this journey with us a little more, to, if there are so many people that want a new school, to maybe ask for doing all of this, say, hey, what about a new school? We really want a new school? Or, we, you know, if you really didn't know we were serious about a remodel, you know, what could we have done better to get the community involved, to keep you aware? How were we not transparent? How did we take too much time, not enough time? How did we rush through this? That's what I would like an explanation for, because I feel like the main justification for a new vote is that we were somehow unfair to part of the constituency, by keeping them uneducated, or not giving them an opportunity to speak up, or somehow leaving them out of the process. And, I'd like to hear how, what we've done to this point has somehow been unfair, incomplete, non-transparent.
Can I kind of-
Yeah, please, Eric.
I can speak well. I think if there is a, the board, to answer your question, in my opinion, is that I understand the law, you can only have two referendum questions, right? So, I understand the 350,000. I personally would like to have seen a referendum question of, do we remodel or do we build the building? But, that wasn't the choice that was presented to us, and I understand that. I really agree with what Bob said up there, I think he hit the nail on the head, as far as I'm concerned. We've got survey results, but that, I'm not gonna sit and debate the results, I understand what Mr. Dahl's saying up there too. I think his numbers give a better explanation, but I'm not gonna sit here and debate that one way or the other.
Well, hey, I will grant you, sitting here, it is very clear that this board does not, is not in agreement on what an adequate survey is.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? So, if, if we're gonna have a survey, we need to decide whether we're gonna trust it or not, right? We need to set a criteria, okay, if we get this many responses, then maybe that, maybe we'll take that into consideration towards how we vote, and if it's below that response rate, maybe we'll consider that inadequate. I think it's very unreasonable for anyone to expect 2,300 voters to fill out a survey, totally agree with that. And, to the, to the comments that have been made, you're looking for a representative sample, that's what a survey is, right? It's not a vote, just like Bob said, right? So, it's, it's, it's a, it's a small piece of information that's supposed to guide us as a predictor of what the voters are going to do. And, it looks like it was fairly accurate, right? The survey said 55% would support the remodel, what was the election? 54%.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Right? So, and, we can totally disregard the survey, I agree that it was just one part of everything else. The reason why it keeps being brought up is because it was the one opportunity that everyone had to give feedback, right? Ahead of time. And, it's unfortunate for anyone, even former school board members, to not fill out a survey. You know, it's unfortunate that happened, but it did, and we're not putting all our eggs in that basket, but I guess, again, my question is, what could we have done better to have the community feel like, okay, I, you know, I know what's happening, and I've done everything I can to steer this huge decision in the right direction?
I'd like to speak to that. The school board didn't make any mistakes, and they're not, I don't feel irresponsible in any way, except for the part about only being able to have two things on the referendum. Everybody that ran into, we had casual discussions about this, what they were hoping to, was this recurring $350,000 a year. If it would have been on the, on the referendum that goes, whether we built a new school or remodeled, and that $350,000 recurring fee wasn't on there, they would have voted for a new school, there would be no question about that at that time. So, I don't know if that helps.
No, that's helpful, thank you. We did make the decision to put that referendum in that election. Larry, you wanna say something?
Part of your answer, Doc, was, I'm meaning like this.
Larry, people of white folks are getting very-
I was gonna answer part of your question, Doc, what could we have done different? There should have been multiple meetings like this during the course of the referendum, the preliminary part of it, like monthly, up to the vote. This could have answered a lot of the questions that concerned if it would have happened.
And I do have another observation about the project in itself. Everybody's gotta realize that the community will be spending almost $12 million, and getting three classrooms, that's what's built in to that design. It's important to remember. No, we ate three new ones, we lose- We're getting no, no more classrooms.
Right.
We're getting a general administrative office.
Correct.
Terrible, terrible use of our community's money.
Your answer, I mean, my thoughts on it, I think that the school board did the right thing, the process is right. I think, I mean, to me, I think a lot of people thought it was a long shot, this would even get passed for a referendum, but just seeing that it did have that support, you know, not as a point, well, you know, maybe people would support a new school, I mean, that probably was a long shot, and what your committee was looking at too. So, I don't think you did anything wrong, and I think there's a group of people that went through the process, and they mainly see, if you didn't do the school, that's a waste of time, but, you know, being on the school board for six years, there's a lot of stuff, like I said, that was a waste of time too, that failed, but, I mean, we went to a charter school, we did a lot of different things, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of time, and that's what being on the school board is. And, I think for this other referendum, I don't think you can look and see what would ever waste time on you, because this is a big expenditure, it's worth putting up a few thousand dollars, whatever it's gonna take, it's worth putting a lot of time into it, because this is a humongous referendum, it's bigger than anything ever before. So, I think, I think the process you got there was the right one. I think if you would have split the votes into new school, remodeled school, there's no way that anything would have passed. I mean, if you're looking to, to actually invest in the, the buildings of the school district, so, I thought it was, I don't think you got to make mistakes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Falter, I'm sorry to interrupt my back to you guys. I'm a first-year teacher here at Point Mill School, and I just would like to thank you guys for all your support of the community, and I think that the community all really supports this school, which is a really cool concept to have, and I think that we need to remember that we all agree to pass our referendum, which is an extremely important thing to do, because that means that we care about our children, our children's futures, and how we wanna educate them in what they deserve in the classroom. But at the same time, I do believe that a new facility is gonna be shining new for a while, and it will get dirty, but that's gonna be the same with this new remodels that we're doing, it's gonna be a burden no matter what we do. I think that a new school was that stronger than the remodels of a school, even though the 50-year gap did not involve that, I think that's really interesting, that the voting would be that whole. I also think that you're gonna be saving money on if you build a new building, because of all the cost efficiency of it, if it's an older building, it's not gonna heat it well, it's not gonna do all the other stuff, and if students aren't getting adequate, if there's only three classrooms added, that means only three, three groups of children are gonna be getting a better classroom, and let's not think that other classrooms are gonna be getting new things in them. But if there was a new school, it would all be even across the board, and all the children would have an equal opportunity to be in a new classroom, and should really deserve to be in a learning environment that's healthy and changing with the way that times are changing, and to all that other stuff, so, that's my opinion. Thank you.
I just wanna make some clarifying points on the project that was proposed. I wasn't gonna get into this, but I don't wanna, like, so, to Larry's point, the issues with the classroom, number of classrooms, were not the issues, actually, the size of the classrooms and the technology that was available in the classrooms. So, classrooms will be improved and enlarged across the board, so all students would be benefiting from new spaces. Part of the project's cost was going to be, or is going to be, making it energy efficient, maybe that insulated, you know, bringing operating efficiencies into the building so that it is cheaper to heat and cool and all that stuff. In addition, when the building was built in the 60s, is that right, 60s, 50s, we did not support kids who learn differently, who are coming to the schools with different needs, and now we have a lot of extra services that are provided in the school, but no space for those services to be for children. So, people are doing radiator vision in the hallway, we have PT in the locker room, I mean, which is really wild. So, a lot of the space will be added, meaning for means that didn't exist 60 years ago when the building was built. In addition, it also includes a gymnasium, which is full-size, currently they plan a gymnasium that is very small, the walls are a lot closer to the edge of the playing area, it's apparently really unsafe, who knew? I did not know this before this all started, obviously, but right now, it's the same way that they have lunch in the cafeteria, and therefore, they are, where they have inside recess, because of whether all the kids are in the hallway for recess. And if we had an extra gymnasium space, we can also be built with a mini, they'd be able to use that as a, as a inside recess. So, there's more that's being added to the school, and in addition, if we built a new school, the space that would be, the space that other new school would have would be empty squared, but it would be the same as a remodeled school, so it's really one or the other.
Maggie, can I ask a question? If the gymnasium would be open to the community, would it not be smarter than common sense was to have it up here with the history?
That was thought of a lot, actually, and it wasn't considered as a either or, I mean, it seemed like it would be another space that could be available to, to be able to do different activities at different times, also taking a location.
I guess my, my point is, we moved the football field up here, so we're not busing people back and forth. Why wouldn't we move everything up here, so we're not busing people back and forth? That's my point.
And we got, we got a lot of input about that over time, I personally, I mean, my personal opinion is that, you know, it was- Like, there was a lot of input from the school. So, first of all, we did an analysis of what the operating costs savings would be, could there be shared staff back and forth between elementary school and an elementary school that was conjoined or that was on campus? We found that there really was not a lot of cost savings as far as staff, because the elementary school would still need their own staff, basically. There weren't a lot of places that, you know, we could pull people out of here, but from there, the town's so small, the drivers, you know, nominal. In addition, people really did not like the idea of having young kids on the same campus as older kids. That was, feedback that surprised me, I wasn't expecting that, but we got that feedback a lot, and very consistently. In addition, as has already been referenced several times by several people, people really felt very strongly about the value of mineral point being that we take care of buildings that are, it seemed that we don't leave places vacant just to, you know, be used for some hard reason, and there's nothing that elementary school didn't do for an elementary school.
Yeah, that's never been discussed, what we'll do with the elementary school, hasn't-
That's exactly right.
Also, that would be a decision in all their boards.
The board have to decide if you do it that land, they have to decide if you lose the building, they have to decide to move whatever ways to come out of the construction site, it was have to be-
Just, just remember, I think we learned a lot when we sold the high school, we could have probably utilized a lot, and should have, would have, could have, you know, and with anything in life, you know, sometimes you have to take a step back and reevaluate. There's a lot of good comments here, and a lot of passion around all this, but I think that the board knows all the facts and all the pros and cons, and I think that needs to be looked at that way. I mean, I get what you're saying, and I know you guys did a lot of work on this, but I think we need to look at the whole picture.
Yeah, you were given the opportunity to look at the whole picture, and you made it, and, you know, that's a decision you made, and I don't wanna, I'm not in a position of, I'm not for one thing or another as either an individual or as the former co-chair of this committee, but, from my perspective, the due diligence was done, they explored a lot of different options and had a lot of different viewpoints, and that was what the board at the time thought was best. They put it up for a vote, and then the community agreed with them. So...
There was still a lot of confusion in that community.
I think that any time, this is again personally my opinion of the...
The head, right.
That any time those large decisions were made, I mean, it's really like the 80/20 principle. You're only going to reach 20% of the population because people are busy, people are too loud. People need to be, you know, you have to be really bright and shiny. And I don't know how much brighter and shinier you all could have made this material. And we even took and upgraded the material that was kind of offered to us by architecture firms being the standard. We made it a lot more user friendly, we pushed it out in a lot more electronic forms, and we got like, you know, the best results we could. There's so much you can do to invite people in if they're not paying attention.
True statement, that this is a, I mean, I think that a school, whichever way, I mean, the board goes with, it's a big deal.
I have a question. So my question is, I remember taking the survey, by the way, in the round I teach, Board grade, at the elementary school. And you all should know that no matter what ends up happening, that the teachers will be in support of whatever. I don't think there's going to be negative comments made whether we go to referendum again and it passes or fails, or if we would end up doing this remodel. But I was trying to remember when I took the survey, I remember like, yes, I would support this. Yes, I would support this. Yes, I would support this. What I don't remember was there a specific question that asked which option you wanted? Like, no, nothing done, a remodel, or a new build? Like, were those things put together as one question? Because I feel like if that was on there, a lot of this conversation might not be happening. Because I feel like a lot of that survey was just, would you support this? And we are really lucky that we live in a community where so many people are supportive. So thank you. So was that on there?
Oh, yeah. No, it was not. I think, you guys remember, it was not a either or question, anyway. The only thing that there were, were, would you support making these improvements? Kind of, we pulled those out. And there was over across the board, support for bringing capacity code towards all of these things. And then asking if it's different. We wanted to see where the community would give support and see if there was an interest in even spending the money.
Actually, maybe it was agree, disagree, strong, you know? So it was, it was, but it wasn't a question.
It was, yeah, it was agree, disagree, but it wasn't like, I think what your question was is, would you choose a remodel or a new build?
Right. If it were a non-referendum, would we ask, would you want the referendum or would you want a school or nothing? You know, like, if those were your normal free choices, that was never actually asked, correct?
Right, yes, that was not that particular question.
All right. Justin Leonard, a teacher here at the high school. Glad to see everybody here. First of all, I want to thank everybody for any time for doing this, helping roll this up around the committee and look into the referendum. I want to thank the board, numbers, you guys, obviously, have been kind of a thankless job, so thank you. I moved here seven, eight years ago now, and I believe this is my sixth year teaching here. And I'm going to add three kids to the school district. As a teacher, you know, I think Dr. Dunn, he asked the question, you know, is there enough information out there? I think our school does a tremendous job of getting information out there. But I think there's also some people like me, believe it or not, as a teacher and a coach, I don't always like to voice my opinion in a public situation kind of like this. Even coming to a school board or reaching out to a school board member and giving them my thoughts. So, you know, I think it's a situation where we're hearing people that maybe just didn't get their opinion out there where they wanted it. And I'll just give an example about the voting. I shouldn't communicate better with my wife, but I voted no, and I voted no because I wanted a new school. I think there's some things that could be done with a new elementary school, centralized campus, the new football field up here. I believe we missed some opportunities with a weight room and fitness center that we are in a 900 square foot closet, basically, for a weight room. And there's other areas that I think that if we rebuild up here at the high school, we could look at fixing those opportunities. You know, I grew up on a small farm, and I think a lot of my dad, and we do things around the farm, and it's always, the question is, okay, we run every possible scenario through our situation. You know, obviously on the business side with the money and what's best for the long run. And sometimes that means we have to spend a little bit more, but in the long run, it makes it worth it. And so for me, I guess, it's just kind of one of those things where you need to look at everything. What's best for the, what's best for the kids? What can we give them? And I'll go back to the yes or no. My wife voted yes, who's an elementary teacher, because she thought that was the best option when it went to referendum, because it wasn't a new school, old school question because of the $350. And she wants, she wanted a new school, but she voted yes in that situation because that's what she thought was best for her and the kids if we could have a new school. So I think there was, there's other people out there that voted just like my wife did. And, you know, once again, I want to thank everybody for everything they've done. I just hope that we can go to a yes/no, a new school, or continue with the referendum answers. So thank you.
Linda, to answer your question, there were, there was a question, there was two. Build a new one here attached to the high school, build a new one here not attached to the high school, and then the remodel of the existing. It was on the street.
I'm Tim Gerald, and there's a couple things that I'd like to mention. First of all, I got a survey, but it was three days later than the time it was supposed to be turned in. So there were people that did not get the survey. Second thing I'm going to mention is the fact that I was on the school board in the late 80s and early 90s prior to building this facility. And I think we went through the same situation, people that were scratching their head thinking, how are we ever going to do it? And now, I don't think there's anybody that comes walking in the front door that isn't dang glad that those individuals at that time went ahead and did what they did. I guess as I look at it, it's like you look at your family business, anything that you're dealing with. I'm going to spend X number of dollars, what am I going to get for it? And I have to sort of agree with what Larry said. I'm going to spend X number of dollars, I think we could get more dollars for our bang than what we're getting going that route. So I, you know, you got an old house, you could put all the money into it that you want, remodel it, but you still got an old house. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, it's Amanda, I'm here at Portage Finley. And as, looking back on the process and being a committee member, I wanted to kind of answer Dr. Dunn's question about what could be done differently. I definitely agree with Larry that there could have been more listening sessions and kind of community outreach where people like I feel that have really valid points that the committee would have loved to hear or been part of the committee. I think would have been great to hear some of these conversations happen. The only thing I think that could have been done differently, a lot of the committee discussions were led by FPH Design. And I do think that they were concerned with their business interests in the end. It would have been really great to have a third party or a neutral party that had been involved in the referendums or involved in getting things on the ballot. Not seeing someone that would, an outside interest that would know us better, but at least help us through the process. Because I think there are a lot of school districts that go through this every year. And we should be relying on either someone or something, some entity that's already done this, lived and learned these mistakes, where we don't have to say, hey, did you guys know that if you put that referendum up against the operating expense, that you're not getting a true answer on new versus remodel? I think we could have relied on someone's expertise versus the financial interests of the company. We would have appreciated that more. Thank you.
Maggie? Was there much discussion on security with this remodel?
Oh, can you say that louder or clearer?
Oh, just if there was much discussion on security with the remodel. And the reason I bring that up, and you talked about the energy efficiency of the building, are the windows going to be replaced in the existing elementary?
I believe so. I think that was all part of, I mean, we haven't looked specifically, but they would do a full upgrade to the current finishes, which I think would have been, that was... To your question about safety, it was discussed a lot. Well, it wasn't discussed a lot because in the way that architecture firms build schools or remodel schools now, safety is a given. And having, and the way that safe entrances, secure entrances are addressed is becoming more and more standardized now. So it's not really a question of if it's just, it's a given. And it's something that they have gathered a lot of data about over the last, you know, hundred years.
And my question with the windows is, if we're not going to replace the windows, we have the heating system. What could that do, I guess, in that building?
Yeah, I can't speak to the materials. I know that Christie have that whole, you know, breakdown where all the costs are. But I know that it wasn't just sticking a brand-new building on the end of the old building. It was getting the old building stable for engineering issues, up to code for accessibility, safety, and efficiency.
And one last thing, I know we're kind of on opposite ends of this, they, a public thing. But I sure thank you for the time that you spent on this and fielding these questions from our guests.
Yeah, I really know. Thank you. I appreciate your...
Yeah, just maybe just a minor consideration, but if a company going ahead with a new referendum, moving the school out here, you have to figure out how you're going to get the little ones to school. Because parents don't have vehicles. And if they're in town, on the other end of town, the buses aren't serving them. So it leaves it up to how you're going to get to school then, especially in the bad months. I know which I speak, because we live on Spruce Street. And I consider Spruce Street the forgotten street in town. You know anything about it. But we had, our kids, they came to school up here. And we remembered it because both of us were working to get the kids to school. And there was no bus that would stop at our drive-through. So shortly after that took place, we noticed that there was a bus going to the subway and it didn't matter. We called the school, I think it was the principal at the time, and they said, well, yeah, the kids came in on that bus because there's no sidewalk to where the bus goes by. So we had an old bus service on either side of us, although it was a half a block from the street. So as a result of that, our boys walked to school most of the time. They didn't hurt, they were big enough, but these little ones, it's a different story. So think about that every time. That's what we had here in Wisconsin. And just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Larry, what was the cost of the internet service to go to the elementary school? I don't even, I taught you about that a little bit.
We ran dark fiber into this building off of the highway, off the main internet line. It was a cost share agreement with federal government and with the school. So we have it into this building. Dark fiber, I guess is what we called it. We do not have it down at the elementary school, so we still have to do wireless internet down there. You're putting me on the spot here, but I was told it was $75,000 a year, a year, to carry our service down to the elementary school. And the board has looked into extending the dark fiber line from this school down there, as we mentioned at the last meeting, and about $500,000 is what we, what I remember.
Was there ever any study done or questions asked as to how much the busing service would cost going down there per year?
We talked about it, but we have not gotten a number. And it would be a hard number. It'd be hard to come up with a number, and I think we all can agree there would be a savings.
I'm being second dollar. I just, I got a question. I'm a little unformed on this, that's why I came here tonight. That's on me. I didn't fill out the survey and send it in. Doesn't matter anybody here, but I go down there. But my question to you guys is, it seems like, I don't know what were you could have done? I have no idea. We all have vires or worse, when you do something, you build a house, you start a business, you do whatever. My question is, you put two things on the referendum. One of them being, would you build a new school or not? The other one, should we rescind the referendum that was passed this fall? That's my question. I don't think the community's behind this. It's very split, 55, 45, that's pretty tight race. That's my thought. Get our ducks and order, and figure it out. Can we put that on there? How's the question?
Oh, can you put that on?
Can we put out a referendum to do, to rescind it or not rescind it?
We can put, we can put two questions on a referendum, Dean?
Correct.
If the board chooses to go down the path of another referendum, I think we would probably use legal counsel to help us with the language on the ballot.
According to Quarles &amp; Brady, who is an offer that helps provide resolution language, I spoke to an Allison Buchanan from at Quarles &amp; Brady, and she said that you cannot do what was done. There's no legal way to go back on the previous referendum. So if the board wished to go forward, because my question was, can you, can you come up with language that would say they cannot act on the prior referendum language that was approved? And put a new question there? And her answer was, no, you cannot do that.
And just to be clear, I mean, everybody that's here, I support the school district and what they're doing. I think it's the foundation for everything we do, right? I mean, our property values, everything. I mean, a lot of people that own property are concerned about their taxes going up. People that have kids here are concerned about the quality of education they're giving. But the problem we don't have is unity. And school board asked for a referendum, it was voted on, and now we want to back that? I mean, either move forward or forget. That's my, that's how I do business. And you can't be the reason for this, by the way. This is the mode on, there's permission saying you cannot go back. So 11.93 is the, it's the highway. There's no way to go back.
I think your point is clear, Dean. Just to clarify, what Mitch said is, and this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you, we cannot undo the language of what passed in November. So we cannot, so what the community voted yes on was to allow us to borrow $11.9 million to remodel the current elementary school. Okay, so the community gave us that permission, we cannot undo that permission. What we can do as a board without a referendum is we can decide not to borrow that money. And we can decide not to do a remodel. Okay? But we have permission to borrow that money specifically for the remodel for the next five years because of that referendum vote in November.
Did that answer your question, Dean?
Yeah, Jeff. Thanks. Hold on, I'm talking now. Sounds not the greatest guy in the world, but it just realizes to me that we passed a eleven point nine million dollar referendum in November, and now you want to do another one in April? So is that a way of getting thirty million dollars instead of just your eleven nine? Or what happens to that, that eleven million dollar referendum that the community passed after, after the next one, if one comes up in April? What happens to that? Is that one nullified? Is that one?
If we, that's a great question, and deserves clarification, and Mitch corrected me on that. If we, if we put a new school project resolution to referendum in April, say for eighteen million, twenty million, and it passes, then the school district will have authority from the community to borrow both totals together. So let's say twenty million plus eleven point nine million. The district will have the authority to borrow all of them. Now, I think-
But what's, what's going to stop you from doing it?
Well, I think common sense. I mean, we're not going to build a new school and remodel the old school.
If you're getting any common sense, then why are we even here?
Hey, point taken.
Why are we even here? It's pointless for not using common sense. Because if the referendum passed-
Correct.
Correct. So why are we here?
You make a great point. My impression-
Not smart to me, I'm a little, more than all that. What year probably was that?
My impression-
For you, but not-
My impression of why we're here is that people that really want a new school feel like they didn't get an adequate chance to vote for in this school. And so that's what we're debating tonight, is did we give people who want a new school a chance to influence that process in a way that gave a new school its best chance of becoming a reality? I think that's what we're debating tonight. Does that make sense? Despite the fact that we went, we went to referendum with a resolution for a remodel expansion, the board decided to put that to the voters. And one could argue that if the community did not want that and wanted instead a new school, that they would have voted that down. And what some voters are saying is that it wasn't clear to us that if the referendum failed, that we would maybe reconsider a new school. And I think that that's a fair point. Because I can't guarantee you that if the referendum had failed, that we would be talking about a new school at this point. I would certainly welcome that conversation if it had failed. And I would have hoped, we would have had this vibrant discussion if it had failed. But to your point, we put a remodel question and it passed. So the debate is, did we put the right question to the public?
I just want to respond to what you just said, because I think theoretically that what's being debated is, was a question correct? The board, I know we asked the right question. But I think what is actually happening is that the vote, the election kind of focuses the mind, and it's become the debate about building new or remodeling. And it's going to be really hard to pull those two things apart.
I would also like to point out, I've got three kids in a home school right now. So I'm not just here to be here. They're-
Do you take your comments seriously regardless of whether you have kids in the school?
I just hope all my kids have the finish pain for a building that is put up when they're thirty-five or forty, or fifteen years old, after thirty million dollars has been spent. And this building was put up in ninety-six. It took ten years to get the roof fixed. How is it, how are you going to treat the new building? Is that going to have the same maintenance schedule as this one had? I'm just throwing stuff on this, on my head. So thank you for your time. I'll call them in a minute. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have anything they'd like to add?
I have a question. And Dr. Young kind of touched on this. So we put this up to the voters, right? So everybody's talking about the democratic process. If we put it back to the voters, and everybody could actually campaign and tell people what they believe, because everybody needed to know why we had such good turnout at the election. It wasn't because of the school. And I know that there was, I have a feeling that there was a lot of people that, despite everything that we had out there for information, didn't even know what they were voting on. That's just a thought. And trust me, I am completely split on this. I have, hey, you know, I still have it in my mind. But I do know, being in construction, a little bit about the remodeling stuff, because I do that a lot, as well as in construction. So that's my, basically my question is the voting. Correct me if I'm wrong, would we be putting it back to the voters? And that is basically kind of what we're, you're discussing, right? Was the voter turnout? Parrish, you're shaking your head.
Well, you're already putting it back to guaranteed smaller number voters. You know that. We're not going to get two thousand and seventy-seven.
I agree, but you know why we have that.
Oh, I agree completely. They're all members of the property tax community. They're adults, who, their American duty is to vote, and they vote. It's their right as citizens to vote, and they vote. Everyone voted, you need anyone, one information could find out.
And I agree with you.
Fight it to the ground. And I agree with you, not every voter votes when they're voting. That's the reality of our system. And every less of people want to vote.
I agree. I completely agree with you. I just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know, make sense of this myself.
Because we don't go back and re-vote.
But if it was primary, you say this was a primary.
But look, I understand. If we can't go back and vote for the Wisconsin state senator in April, we don't have that power. I mean, you're doing something that's totally different than what we normally do. When we vote on something, the public decides. And now the school board is taking that choice away possibly from the largest turnout we've had in voting in decades. And that's where my issue comes in. The whole thing is that you're asking for the voter to be heard, and to be heard, you know what the voter says.
But we're not taking it away if we're asking another question on-
We're taking away at least seven hundred to a billion dollars, seven hundred thousand to a billion dollars of this private away if you were. Can we agree on that, with construction costs, well, he's asking, and your construction will say?
That's, yeah, that's what they're telling us.
And if we don't pass it, we will lose features that we, the public, have actually provided. So you will be taking features away from us if this vote doesn't pass. That's a choice that you will be making, or us.
Parrish, that, the true choice was never given to the voters of a new building versus a new one.
I, I think there were, there were not multiple votes. I think we've obviously talked this, this two votes into the ground. Obviously, if we weren't sure funding, we wouldn't have needed three hundred eighty thousand dollars, which we desperately needed for the operating possible school to grow. It was a very necessary thing for us to build that whole budget over here, and we're taking services away.
The board consequences. And Parrish, one other comment. Would it be fair to say that probably have a little bigger than an average turnout if there's an eighteen million dollar question?
I think you can say that, but I think it's, you know, if, and I was looking at it, they were usually about eleven hundred in April. And then we had a spike of sixteen. And so we're probably looking at maybe thirty-two hundred. Which would be, which would be better than usual. That would still be less than seventy-five percent of who voted in November. It would be a less quality representation of the voting public. And I mean, I, I'm pro-voting. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, as a, you know, the democratic process, what the laws of our country are, are these things. This is where I have the problem with that, because you ask the community, and the community has overwhelmed and has said yes. And then, you know, we talked all about deliberation, and, you know, I can't imagine what you guys could have done more. There were three school board meetings that you talked about this at. And what do you think if some total of people were in those rooms when you had those discussions? Bring this up.
During school board meetings? I don't think that-
We rarely get big crowds at school board meetings.
Yeah, there wasn't many.
So people have the opportunity. So if we opened it up, we're just giving people an opportunity that they already had. And I, I didn't ever read anything or hear anything about people in those three months voicing a large scale concern that this was the wrong plan. This is all coming after as voters, as viders remorse after the choice had been made.
I'll tell you, if you look at those meetings, there were probably a couple people that stood up and said, the twelve million dollar project is too expensive, the taxpayers cannot handle it, do not put this to a vote.
Sure. And that's a very reasonable statement. That's not saying that we should have gone to eighteen.
This many people stood up and said, we need a new school instead. This many.
So we're three million was numbers of respondents, and one, literally not a single person came to you guys and asked for what you're trying to do right now before the election. And there was ample opportunity, and a lot of people in this room from the school board meetings intermittently, and we all can watch them online. That information was out there. And you have those feelings, it's very easy to voice, you just walk in the door, you raise your hand, and you talk.
I also think that we're forgetting about another part of the democratic process, which is when we elected you all to make these kinds of decisions that will then be brought to an election. So it's not like there wasn't a democratic process here. This was all democratic process. The fact that you were in that room having that conversation was part of the democratic process.
I totally agree, Maggie. I just want to clarify how this situation is a little bit different than, say, a senatorial election. Okay? So this is how it's different. The community can file a petition to ask the board to reverse any decision that the board is making. For example, if we decided to hire Mr. Wayne Wright as the long-term superintendent, and a large part of the community thought that was a bad decision, they could file a petition to the board to say, we want you to reconsider that decision for these reasons. Now, the board has to decide-
Wow, thanks. Thank you very much.
There was no petition, right? Not even a petition? So, yeah, right, I missed that you, yeah, I'm sorry. So, but I tried to pick a safe topic, pick a safe analogy there. But the board has to decide, you know, how many signatures on that petition would we consider sufficient to make us reconsider? Right? So essentially, that's what the board, that's what some of these, some of the board members are feeling energy to do, is reconsider this decision. Okay? Now, there was no petition from the community. I, we don't know how many people think that we should go to a new referendum. We don't know. Jeff said he got a hundred phone calls. You know, Larry said a dozen. You know, I don't know how many people called Tony or Nate. You know, I know how many people contacted me. So maybe we have close to one ninety-six? Who knows how many we have that are trying to sway us to reverse the decision? And certainly it would be helpful if we had seven hundred signatures on the petition. But we, but we don't. So, and I don't want to, I don't want to discount all the great input that's, that's had here. I don't want to discount everyone that showed up. But that's the dilemma we're facing right now. We're getting strong opinions to reconsider, and we're trying to weigh, is this a big enough subset of the community to influence us to reverse course with really nebulous data?
And you're also getting a chunk of the community telling you not to.
Exactly.
I mean, you're getting, you know, fifty-fifties or proposition, which happened in the election.
Right. So there's, there's the dilemma. But to your point, we can reverse course on this issue legally. But the argument to trust the democratic process and the fact that we took this all the way to an election and it passed weighs very heavily in my mind.
Perhaps on a survey is more.
Perhaps on a survey. Well, we're just going to throw it out. I don't know if we should do that.
But if you want to get results in a survey, Josh, if you're looking on this, you've got to put on top of it, we're raising your taxes.
Right.
To get responses.
Right. Hey, point taken. I mean, some, some people did not get the message on this, and I, and this, this topic is, something's going to, something big's going to come up again, you know, in a couple years or a few years. And we're going to try to do it the right way so that this exact problem doesn't come up again. Right? So that when we go to referendum, we feel like, okay, this is, this is the question the community wants us to ask them. You know, that's what we want. And there is, there's some feedback that we didn't ask the right question. Right? And so I'm thinking, what did we do wrong to misjudge that? Right? So that's where the feedback from Courtney and a couple other members on what we could have done differently was helpful.
I'm kind of wondering how all this got started as far as reconsideration of the vote of the public, especially in Gary's comments and the democratic process. We didn't have this choice in any of the other people that were, votes that were taken in the November elections. I didn't like the guy that won. I didn't, how can I go to anybody and say, well, the lighting is right, we should do this again? I guess, how did this all come about that this meeting's meeting held tonight? Why is there reconsideration of the democratic process, of the vote of the state? That's my question.
Thanks, good question, Barry. Honestly, because we have many vote, contact myself and a few other board members, we signed out a legal counsel, and they told us that this was an option that we could look at. That's why it's here.
Okay.
Isn't it true that this is unprecedented, though? No other school district in Wisconsin has attempted to-
I'm in a place that's been first at just about everything in the state. Like I said, that being that we shouldn't take a step back on everything. I think that even if it's unprecedented, that maybe it's the right move. Because we're giving the public the opportunity, as we are tonight, to start discussing with us again. As I have said in prior meetings, as far as I'm concerned, as a board, we've dropped the ball. That's my personal opinion.
Did anyone from the school board contact us, school board members from other districts, to find out whether they got negative calls after a referendum?
No, because frankly, I don't really care about the other districts. I can tell you that I contacted our superintendent at the time many times and asked to be part of your committee. And I told him, no, we don't want school board members on that committee. I should have just joined as well. Well, that was, that was the way it was. Ruled with an iron fist, so.
God, better than me. I'm actually just trying to answer your question as best I can. And I already said that I actually voted no, because I was in favor for a new building. But I did attend multiple meetings over the summer, and watched the school board discuss it multiple times. So I was one of the few people in the community that got to witness how it went from member to member and how it all went down. That's where I was at. I think it had a good marriage. But like Mr. Leonard, we had two different votes at our house. Right? One was yes, and I spoke to my wife about that, saying what that was. And I doubted she would stand up and talk to you about it. But what she expressed to me was, well, I did have an opportunity to do a new school, and I just needed the support of the school. In effect, so although I'm not actually in favor for the twelve million dollar referendum, I'm in support of the school, and didn't believe that there was going to be any other option to do that. So that- to do that, so that was not something wrong. Please let me know.
I've got a, sorry, a couple of points I just want to make. I won't be supporting this because I don't think we're asking an apples-to-apples question. When we asked the first question, the options were, you could support nothing, you could support both, a new school, you may vote yes to this, but would prefer a new school, but this is the question, you could vote no to this because you want a new school, or you could vote yes to this because it's what you wanted, okay? That entire demographic that was going to vote no to either question now has to change their vote, okay? Their no vote on a second question ultimately becomes a vote for renovation, which they didn't support the first time. So because the questions to me are different, the playing field is not even, I don't think the results, okay, can be construed as even. Because you may have 40% of the voters who originally supported a new school, oh, yes, and 15% of the voters who originally supported nothing, but if we're going to spend your money, would prefer to spend it on a new school. So I don't think they're even questions, so I won't support a second question. My other common rule to the board is I think we need to make it clear in a motion, if we're going to support this, that this is an ultimate question, that part of our motion needs to be, we are putting this to referendum, and if it passes, this is the path we're going to take. I don't want to have another discussion about numbers and vote results in April, when quite frankly, a couple of us could be lamed on board keepers. I mean, it's a possibility, so I'm just throwing that out there to whoever's making the motion, that it would be nice to have it clear to the voters in April that this is a vote on a new school or a referendum sheet. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Schwanz. Wouldn't even be here tonight except I ran into one of you, and you can guess amongst yourselves who it was, just casually this week, and, you know, since you're all these, I can say he invited me to a meeting, and it's very interesting, I think it's very positive. It's, I want to make one specific comment and one general comment, and the specific one is directed at old houses or old schools. I happen to live in a house that was built in 1846, which is even older than I am, and I put a lot of time, energy, and money into it because I think it's a wonderful place, and I wouldn't trade it for any new house that I've ever seen. I think there's a, there's a connection with tradition, with a background, there's a connection in this community with having an elementary school in the central city, that is very strong to me, but not everybody feels that way. The general comment is that we live in a time nationally, at a state level, of great question of the credibility of our governmental units. This comes up repeatedly, and I think anyone who doesn't question that is not keeping tabs on current politics, and this is politics, it's politics on a local level. There's obviously great disagreement, some people want a new elementary school, some people want a renovated elementary school, some people don't want to spend any money, or at least not on a new school. But the credibility problem that the board faces is, how much are you going to kick this down the road? How much are you going to accept? We didn't get what some of us wanted, and so we're going to come up with something else, put it to a new referendum, put it to a new survey, bring in experts to, to give us more information. There has to be a point at which the board decides, we're going to do this, or we're not going to do that. And we've had a referendum, we've heard the public speak through the vote, and I think you should carry through with it. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments. I'd like to move that the board draft the resolution language for April 2019 on a new elementary building referendum.
We have a motion.
I'll second that motion, Tony. I want a clarification. The exact language Jeff will be drafted again. This will be one motion of many moving forward. Mitch?
If you want, ask for a resolution language to be drawn up, you would contact Quarles and Brady to give us that language.
So this won't be the exact language, right? This is just a...
Here, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Could you speak up and say what the...
We couldn't hear it.
The motion is for to draft a resolution for a new building to be placed on the April election by 2020, and second by Larry Stappus.
One question about, where are you talking about the new building? Are you going to figure out the old one, put it there, or just bring it out there?
I think, I think that would be probably part of the resolution. Right now, we just want language for, we want to be able to go to the legal experts to get a referendum language. I guess we could, after we get that, we'll have to decide if we're going to put it here or next to the school, or attached to the school, or down there.
I think to clarify Daddy's comment, that the special proposal around moving an elementary school to the high school site. Just as a point of clarification.
Larry said that the intent is to put the new school on the new site, but I don't, I don't think the referendum will, I don't think the resolution will specify whether it's attached or detached unless we decide that over the next few weeks. Just to be clear, if we vote tonight to draft a resolution for April, the language of that has to be finalized by January 21st.
Yep.
Okay, so we basically have one month to be as specific as possible to, as far as what question we ask the community, okay? So, that brings me to my next point. Dennis, you made a good point about location. My next point is how much is this project going to cost? Before I agree to even consider putting a new vote to the community, I'd like to know how much the new school is going to cost. We were presented with four options for new schools in the elementary school planning committee stage, and there were, there was one new school option on the current school site in the old football field. There were three options presented on this current site, two were detached and one was attached, and all of them were estimated to be about 18.3, .5 million, basically 18 million plus for a new project. Now, the advice we've been given from both design firms and contractors is that we should expect a 5%, 5% to 6% inflation in total cost of the project if we, if we don't start it until a year from now, which is basically going to happen, right? Either the remodel will not happen this summer if we pass this resolution and go to April, and a new school won't start until we have designs, bids, contractors. I would say we'd be lucky to start in the spring of next year, maybe in the winter, but essentially, we're looking at a 5% increase in the estimates we currently have. So what I wanted to have clarified before we pass a motion is, do we know how much this project is going to cost? And if we don't know how much it's going to cost, how are we going to get that information in an expedited amount of time by January 21st so that we can actually finalize the project? I would, I would feel horrible if we miscalculated what the cost of the project would be, and then we didn't ask for enough money, and then we end up short cutting a roof, and then we need a new roof on that school in 10 years, right? So I would like to know how much this project is going to cost. If we look at 18 million plus 5% inflation, 10% of 18 million is 1.8 million, half of that is $900,000, so you're looking at about a 19, 19.5 million dollar project, based on just those estimates.
I just have one quick question. When is the deadline for me to get something on the April ballot? Do you know?
January 21st.
So you have until then, basically, to decide your language.
Correct.
Okay.
And so those who would be then voting to do this feel that there's enough time between today and January 21st, decide among four plans, give full community feedback to at least 196 votes, or surveys are due, and how would that, how would possibly get surveys out and respond on what people in the community want of these four projects? I see no way that you're going to get any feedback from the community of a meaningful number in 35 days. And that, that would be the question I would ask Tony and Larry, is how do you feel that you're serving us as a community by not taking our feedback for what plan you want before you have a plan on the ballot for us to vote for in April? I would love to have both of you answer that.
This meeting tonight, Parrish, gives the board direction as to what... We're going to explore a different path.
Right.
We don't have all the information tonight, and we certainly don't want to go out and hire an architect to give us the number on a, a new school, other than the number we already have, until the board makes a decision, and that's what that decision is tonight. And Mitch, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember the last referendum, the language on the ballot, we had up until, was it, was it August or was it September where we had to have the actual number?
There will be a number on the ballot. Right, right. But I'm saying, we won't know what plan you want. You won't get feedback from us as to having a school on the football field, or attached, or detached, there will be at most four meetings, unless we have two, there'd be eight day meetings, which is way less than the opportunity that was given to the person. So I, I'm just wondering how you all feel confident picking from those four plans in that short period of time, if you were to vote down another referendum. You certainly, in my opinion, if you may differ, wouldn't be taking our feedback as a community as to which plan we thought was best of those plans.
I think what we want to do tonight is we want to get, we want the board to approve or disapprove of being able to get referendum language. Once we get that approval, then we can say, okay, we're going to have, are we going to have a language that says we want it attached? Are we going to offer two questions, you know, one that says attached, one that says detached? I think what we, what we need to do...
So you'll choose two of the four options? You'll choose...
What I'm saying is, what happens is, we just keep talking about this, talking about this, talking about it, and we're saying we need to make a decision as we have this meeting for today. We need, we need the yes or no, if we're going to even put it on, put it on a referendum language. If we don't have, if we get a no for referendum language, then we're not going to do anything. If we get a yes, then we're going to have that ready to go at a couple more board meetings, and I'm sure we'll have more than a couple of board meetings.
Well, I mean, you've got four, you've got five weeks from, from tomorrow.
Right.
Compared to at least three months worth of board meetings that we have in the summer for more than one year.
We're not starting from scratch, though, we already have some plans in place, right?
That's correct.
It's not like we're just, hey, we're starting from tonight, we have some plans in place, we're already...
No, and that's a definite given, though, is the choice of those four, right? I think those who are unhappy with the amount of surveys that were returned, how will we get a representative of all for this by January 21st?
And Parrish, we have efforts in place with, we put, we put out the remodel to bid for architectural services, and they're coming in, so we gotta, we gotta decide, we still need to go through that process or go back home, and that's another reason for the move.
Would you ask her, wouldn't he would have to have that of all in order to be ready for a referendum?
The actual number, John?
January 21st.
January 21st, we have to have the language exactly as it will be on the ballot.
Including the bottom line number?
Correct.
What's the number?
So 19.5 already, and also a decision on the baseball field, playground equipment, playground area, which is not included in that, just a note.
Are we talking 21?
My first question, I'm calling switching to school, includes baseball grounds, playground equipment, other items. Does FTH include that in the original 18.5 million?
It includes, the cost they gave, they, I would say, round of events, not included. They did include cost of baseball damage, I do not remember, they threw it out.
The cost, the cost of the baseball field is not included in the current project that passed. It was estimated, depending on how much leveling of land, you know, and depending on the location, I think it was quoted somewhere between 500,000 and a million dollars.
Add...
No. To move, to move that baseball field.
They're not supposed to be touching the baseball field with this remodel.
The intent of the current proposed design is that the baseball field will be preserved as is.
So if, if you came up with a number for a new school, it would be approximately 19 million plus, a new baseball diamond, or...
I think we would just use the current baseball diamond as is, and the project would not include a new baseball diamond. But it probably will include a new playground with equipment and everything that goes in parking lot, bus lane.
So if we just sold that property, they would sell that without baseball damage?
Well, that's, that's to be determined, I mean, no one's talked about that yet. But just, just to be clear, and I apologize if I've talked too much, but my, one of my questions is, you know, let's say a new school referendum fails in April, we will have delayed the plans for renovation for a full year, that will cost the taxpayers a mineral point, approximately 5% inflation cost of a $12 million project is $600,000. So what I am not sure of is, are the taxpayers of this town willing to pay $600,000 to have a new vote?
That's the only part of the question, I'm, there's only the issue.
Or are they willing to pay 19.5 million plus? But that's, that's another, that's the question that the board wants to ask the community, right? But regardless of whether the referendum in April fails or passes, we will have, we will have sacrificed $600,000 for the current project in delays to go to a new vote, and I personally am not comfortable with that.
That figure is from, is that an industry standard? Because, anyway, so what you're saying is, with 12 years, that project, if we wait 12 years, that project will cost us $12 million.
So it's more... The cost could be, it'll cost 16% by a year.
I can't believe that. I think that is a scare tactic from our architect.
Can we ask Nate, the contractor, what he thinks of the, of the year-on-year price increase for construction costs?
You can, but I'd ask, granted, he does more commercial stuff than me.
I'm a residential, so Randy, do you have any insight on that?
What's the question?
If there are year-to-year five percent increases in cost for labor and material and that for this sort of project, if we push it five years, it's going to cost twenty-five percent more than it is right now.
I don't believe in that.
You may have made what, what were the [inaudible]?
Well, I mean, you got to go with markets and stuff, and how things are, so like, price of steel right now is up a little bit because we're bigger with China, and you know, on a national level. So I mean, there's times when I sell copper wire to my customers, I have to sell it at this price because it costs me this much shit, but then there's times where copper's at very low price and I can sell it cheaper because, so...
Look, I don't care, I don't care what the remodel's going to cost in five years. I don't care what that estimate is. We have the estimate from a design firm and great Kramer Brothers that we're looking at approximately five percent increase in inflation cost based on the current market, just like Randy said, and until we have a counter expert that disagrees with that, I'm not going to go with someone saying, well, that doesn't seem right to me, okay? Because I have two experts telling me otherwise. So we need to plan on this being a costly delay, if you consider six hundred grand costly.
Dr. Dunn, they were experts that were planning on getting a commission from the project.
My name is Mae Storm.
One closer. Please.
My name is Mae Storm, and I have a question. I urge you guys to look at the survey results for the site, and so it's locked in the site, because if the survey results are correlated to the votes of the referendum passing, I think the survey question regarding location may give you insight into what the public supports.
Danny, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments on that board?
Yes, for clarification, I'm curious if our intent then is upon past motion, upon past referendum to decide in April which project we're doing, or our intent is to name this the project if it passes? Or do we want to evaluate two different votes in April and pick a project? So our intent is to make this the project if it's successful, then we should probably make that part of our motion. So it's clear to the public.
I think what we're doing right now is just giving permission from the board to actually...
I think what we're doing right now is just giving permission from, you know, getting a yes vote or a no vote. Yes vote, we draft this resolution language, and we draft that, we draft that language on what we decide, on what we decide to act. If we know, then we can decide that.
At what point? I guess that's my question. At what point are we going to decide if we have two successful referendums, which project?
Well, I think what we're doing is we're saying, my intent is in April, whatever it would be, would be the one vote, but I mean, that, that is not what we're discussing tonight, we just want to get the language.
I understand that that piece of it can't be part of a resolution. I mean, we can't make it part of the resolution.
No.
It's really out. So when, though, we're going to back on...
Although we have to find out, first of all, we have to find out if this passes, then we have to find out if the referendum passes, then we can decide, then the board makes a decision about referendum, and we say...
So you would prefer it to late from [inaudible].
Well, almost have to.
Evaluate voting results. That's my question, is if everybody's intent in asking this was to find out, or if it was to make this the project, so that the people know they're voting on one or the other?
We have to, or have to decide that after the referendum.
Okay.
Andy, to your point, I think you raise a good question. I could see if this came back, why couldn't it be a referendum question? Do we do what has passed, or do we do the eighteen million? Why, can that be placed on the April referendum? It cannot, that's...
You cannot, you cannot undo...
Not, oh, you can't do it.
You cannot undo the...
Well, you would not be undoing the one if you have it there. Do we do this, or? That was our problem to begin with, we weren't allowed to put the two options on.
Would we then ask to next November if they vote pass, which referendum the citizens of mineral one wanted to go for, if there were two of that referents, or if the board then makes that decision for the vote itself?
We'd be able to do it in November, Parrish, because we can only go to one one year.
Okay, so then we have to wait until April of twenty twenty to then ask the community what they chose of the two referents that they had passed.
I think we're going to let this go to vote, but my intent is that we specify before the language is finalized, January twenty-first, that we specify what we're going to do if it passes, and what we're going to do if it fails. And the board can pass a resolution that says exactly that, this is our actions, if it passes, this is our action, if it fails, a plan B. We will specify what our plan B is before we even finalize the language. In fact, if this language, if this motion passes, I will be making a motion tonight to discuss our very intent on what, on what plan B would be.
Let's call a question.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stappes?
Yes.
Bush?
No.
Chambers?
No.
Bassett?
Yes. Carrie, four three.
I'd like to make a motion that if we end up passing, if we end up voting for a referendum for a new school, that if it passes, we do what it says, and if it fails, we do what the November resolution said, to us to expand and remodel that old school at eleven point nine million dollars.
Any other discussion?
If, if the resolution in April for a new school, new elementary school passes, we will do what the resolution in April says, whatever the language is. If it fails, we will do exactly the language of the resolution that passed in November regarding the elementary school.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's call a question, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stappes?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.